Six thirty-two, I'm gonna call the Bureau Counter, or Assistant Bureau Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Uh, vocal.
Commissioner Rivera?
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Hi there.
Commissioner Abad?
Yes, here.
Chairperson Hammerness?
Here.
Let the record reflect, Vice Chairperson Harvey is now present.
Well, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. One again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Staff, at this time, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Chairperson, there are no adjustments to the agenda.
Excellent. Public appearances, B-one. Matter is not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that a longer presentation be submitted to the Planning Commission in writing. Are there any people here tonight that wish to address the Planning Commission on an item that is not currently on the agenda? I'll take that as a no. I like that when the pages are upside down, okay. Making me work here. B-two, matters appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the Planning Commission concerning any item appearing on the agenda, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson. Me, if you haven't figured that out yet. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. I'm going to guess that you all are here tonight for items on the agenda. Would that be correct? Excellent. Consent calendar. All items appearing under consent calendar will be acted upon by the Planning Commission in one motion with discussion. If any commissioner or other person requests that any item be considered separately, that item will then be taken up at that time as determined by the chairperson. Are there any things on the, anything on the consent calendar that needs to be taken up separately? I'll take that as a no. All right, the, has everybody read the minutes for the consent calendar? Any, any discussion on the minutes? If there are none, then I will request a motion for the approval of the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Commission meetings.
Is there a second?
A second that.
Been moved and seconded. Call for the vote. And not registering?
There we go. Motion passes four zero.
All right. Public hearing, discussion, action, recommend night, D-one. Subject, public hearing, discussion, action, O Street abandonment between twelfth street and thirteenth street. This time, I'm going to open up, uh, a public hearing on this item. Staff report, please.
Commissioners, item D-one is presented for the Planning Commission's review of the project's conformity to the general plan. A request to abandon the portion of O Street between twelfth street and thirteenth street for the development of an industrial park was submitted to our department by Mr. Joshua Quintero. Mr. Quintero is here to answer any questions, and staff is here to answer any questions as well.
Quintero is the property owner?
Correct.
Okay. Any comments from the commission on this item, or?
I actually did have a question.
Okay.
Um, one of my questions is, I, I, it's my understanding we're abandoning this road 'cause he's on both sides and he's gonna, wanting to completely build across it?
That is correct.
If we were, if we abandoned this roadway tonight and something were to happen where that development does not proceed, or it, it, for some reason doesn't come to be, um, what happens to that roadway abandonment? Does he keep it and just not use it? Or do we, does it revert back to the city, or what happens to it if the project doesn't come to fruition?
Sounds like a question for you. Basically, wha- well, what's on your agenda is for determination about conformity with the general plan. So, assuming for the sake of the discussion, if you find that it conforms to the general plan, it then goes to the City Council. The City Council then conducts a hearing, and City Council is the entity that would ultimately abandon. Once it's abandoned, it, 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 uh, the city's rights in the surface to have a road are terminated. And so, the ownership would, would, uh, uh, go to the underlying owner. Uh, and, um, so, you know, so, so that, yeah, that's a, that would be a, basically, it would be done. And so, um, I think that's why one of the determinations that are made in the course of all of this is that you do not anticipate any present or future need for the road. The thought being, if you think there is, then you shouldn't abandon it. Uh, uh, and, but if you find that there isn't a perspective or future need for the road, uh, then I, that's the circumstance of the general plan. So, again, you're making a recommendation to the council about conformity to the general plan.
And it, can I understand that if it's not listed in our circulation or mobility element for any future roadways or anything, it's, is, it's just property that the city owns on a map somewhere it was determined to be a roadway way, or it, I'm just wanting to make sure before we say, okay, we're gonna abandon it, there was no, at one point, plan for that road?
I don't know. I'm, my understanding was that this was, was never developed as a road.
Yeah, I, I know that there's times that, that, there's like, potentially, we have a roadway right of way and it's a, a plan for somewhere in the distant future to build it, and I'm just wanting to make sure before we recommend that this road, uh, roadway right of way be abandoned, that there wasn't some plan for it in the future. That we know of, okay.
And I would say, I, 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 I don't believe there's any application or anything pending, but I think there are other areas of O Street farther south, around Second, where there's, where there's similar thoughts in terms of u- using what used to be a, a, a street as, um, part of the development.
And I know it's probably a question that is not gonna be associated with this action that we're taking tonight, but I was noticing in the, the site photos that there's a storm drain right where the curb return starts turning into the property. And I'm just wanting to make sure that, uh, at a point that it gets developed, if they were to take that sidewalk and curb all the way across that, that storm drain, they have to keep that in place.
We wanna keep it in place.
Okay, that's, I think, all the questions that I had.
Else? I will say, um, uh, Mrs. Mendoza, um, great question, uh, on future use, who it belongs to. Um, and I had the same concern as to, um, future development, but, um, I kind of rested any question on my part since, on the backside of that, there is the water treatment. And, and I wouldn't expect the city to, to go away from that. And, yeah, I, I think, I think it was a great question. And, and I, I had questioned that myself, um, but once I looked at, at the picture, at the illustration here, showing that the water treatment i- is there, I mean, it's, there's no future development.
Um.
I was just, uh, um, touched on the fact that it's, it's a right of way the city has, is the landowner has up to the middle of a road, since he has both.
All right, I'm not, I pull your mic down a little bit.
Okay, uh, how I understand is, the land on, that runs underneath a right of way belongs to the landlord. If I own this parcel, for example, I have, I own it till the middle of that right of way. And since he owns both sides, effectively, he owns it straight across. The only restriction is the fact that there is a right of way for a road. But, so, if there's not a use for it by the city giving it up, it's like going back, reverting it back to the original before the right of way came into existence. Right? And if the city wanted to have it, you know, they'd have to go through the same process as they did in order to get it in, to begin with. But it seems like the staff at, the general plan doesn't see that there's going to be a need for that part of the road.
My, my sense is, if you look at the original townsite maps for the city of Imperial, a lot of this was laid out back in the day.
Early nineteen hundreds.
And it was, and it was never developed, although it was there. And so, like you say, if the city, the city abandons and, and, and the practice is that, uh, uh, the owner on each side owns to, owns the underlying fee interest to the middle of that right of way. And it would, so it reverts half and half. So, if you own both sides, then you're right.
We're out. Okay, thanks.
Actually, this is body, I wanted to comment on that. So, right now, the city owns that street. There, there's no right of way. It's, it's actually a city-owned street. And that's when that map in nineteen oh two recorded, the city took over all the streets there. The right of way, there's no right of way. So, when we're proposing the abandonment, then his, his property lines will be extended to center line.
And he gets to pay more property tax.
Yep.
Uh, the retention basin, where, where you guys are, you guys obviously have seen the illustration that we've received. Um, is that retention basin sitting on the northwest corner back there? Where, where's the retention basin gonna be at?
Currently, right now, I'm, I'm building a, a new facility for my business. And we have submitted a plan and in case that the abandonment didn't go through, to have a retention basin only on the parcel that I have for the new building. So, if this goes through, it kind of changes, we'd have to resubmit on how we wanna lay it out, which Taylor would probably help best fit that. I've spoke with Jesus about having a dual-purpose retention basin to kind of consolidate it in one area for both parcels. So, we definitely would like to get it out of the view of the public and hidden, so we can clean that area up and hopefully, people will follow suit with what we do, and that side of town will start looking nice.
That's what we're hoping for. Is, uh, what, what exactly we, uh, is the intention on the machining portion? What, what are we machining over there?
Uh, we're industrial metal fabrication, so we serve as power plants, factories, architectural, structural buildings, pretty much anything made out of metal, we, we do it.
Were you guys currently, um, out of?
We're here in, in the county limits, kind of in a residential area, and we grew too big and got too much attention. And now the county's running us out into your guys' jurisdiction, which works better for us anyways.
Will it work better for us, 'cause we'll get some of the money instead of the county?
Yeah, we do about four million dollars a year in revenue right now, so we're hoping to double that in the next two years.
Oh, with your spending and building that building, I would hope so.
Yeah.
Um, so, my, my questions are pretty limited. So, I'm looking at your plot map here, the one with the, all the pretty colors. And, um, O Street doesn't look like it actually has any development on it. Any, any actual parcels moved on to it. So, it's still gonna be a street of some sort?
Kind of use it more for a parking lot instead of road, so we can utilize as much land as possible.
Okay, and will the city still have access to that gate for the water plant, or will it have to abandon that?
Uh, um, it'd actually have a utility easement. There's a twelve-inch water line that goes through there, and the IID has a power line there. So, regardless of what I do, that will always have a utility easement for city access for repairs for that water line, and the IID has theirs for access for the power.
Actually, that was my next question, but there you go. I was more, at this point, I was just more about the gate, 'cause there's a gate there. And the city uses that for access. Would that act, would that, would the city abandon that access simply because the property would be abandoned?
Th- thirteenth street going to the east is still in place, so the city can still access that south gate, the thirteenth street.
There's a street there?
Yeah, on a, on a map, there is.
I was gonna, it may be on the map, but I drove around over there, and I didn't see anything that resembled a street, but okay.
Well, it's, it's le- le- legal and physical access for that part.
Yeah.
We would be happy to submit an application to take over that as well.
Um, all right.
Exhibit B. Uh, if, if you go to the, uh, the, the application, there is an exhibit B, uh, right after the legal description, uh, so you can see that thirteenth street it, it's there. So, city is going to keep that access, uh, uh, coming from the east along, uh, thirteenth street, and then north on, uh, O Street to access the city facility.
Well, I, I mean, I realize the city facility has a lot of gates. It's, that is not the only one. I just was curious.
Yeah, no, no, but yeah.
What agreement or anything there was between them. They, I keep continuing to use that access gate, or if it was just gonna have to be kind of like, eventually just kind of basically be a last resort gate.
Yeah, no, no, but the, the city secured, uh, access.
Um, the street city property? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Abad, you?
Yeah, you were thinking what I'm thinking about, um, with the clarification that that, uh, O Street portion that's being recommended by staff to be abandoned. The clarification was it's city property, right? It's not a right of way. Okay, so the question mark is, is there an issue of giving away public funds with respect to that's property belonging to the city? Is there some compensation that needs to be considered?
That's where I was going next.
Yeah. No, I'm not trying to gouge you guys. I'm just looking at it that ev- every time I go to a public meeting and I ask for something, they say, we can't give away public funds. Is it, there's a difference?
Um, you raise, you raise a question that, that occurred to me at, they were talking. It was, I was given to understand by the documents that what the city's interest in is surface only, aside from the easements. And, and if an abandonment were to go forward, it would be subject to this, the city and IID utilities. Uh, but I, what I heard somebody say is that it isn't a right of way, the city owns it. And indeed, if the city owns the fee, which means it owns it like you own your house when you pay the bank off, that is a much different discussion. And indeed, issues of gift would come up. If our only interest is i- in the surface, and we have no use for it for that purpose, the law allows us to abandon that use. If we own, if we own it, then yeah, we can't just give it away. So, and if you, if you look at the staff report, it suggests that our interest in the property is surface only. And then, and if that's the case, that's where you get into the discussion about, once you abandon that surface use, it goes fifty-fifty to each side of that road, to the, uh, what's, what I think of as the underlying fee owner.
Well, any property's surface use. I mean, my prop, yeah, no, go ahead.
Re- real quick prelim will tell you what, what is on there, okay? Has anybody done that? Do you guys ha- have, when you bought the property, you have the prelim? Because it would say whether or not it's a right of way, or?
Yeah, I, I'm a licensed land surveyor, and the map that was created in nineteen oh two created all streets within the city of Imperial. So, that is a street, and just next door, you see there's already a street abandonment that was done. So, typically, when the city of Imperial doesn't have a use for the street.
Okay, I understand your credentials, but I would think it would be, uh, expeditious on our part, you know, staff like that, to confirm, because you represented that the city owns it versus a surface.
The city owns all of the streets. It, it's not a right of way. The city actually owns that street.
They own that property.
Yeah, like when, if the county wants to build a road, they have right of way, and the property owner's already owned to the center line of that road. The city, when they made the map in nineteen oh two, they said, we own the lot, I mean, the streets, and then sold the blocks.
Okay, well, that's the point of gift to public funds. I think there's, needs to be a little bit more digging to confirm what we're being asked to recommend to the city council.
My question was basically boiled down to, we own the street, they want the street, they have to pay for the street.
Yeah, the probe quo, if that's a fact.
Because I mean, if, I mean, not that I wanna make you guys pay for the street, I'm just curious, because it is technically the city's property, and you want it.
The reason we're requesting for the street abandonment is to create, uh, more room to build the retention basin. And once we can build a retention basin, then we can build the mini storage, which then generates revenue for the city.
I, I think that one of the options for the council, based on the fact that we do not have clarification on the questions, would be if you would like to recommend it with a required payment, if it, if the city owns it, or if you'd like to have it come back, or, you know, 'cause I think that's the issue. The difference between right of way and owning a property for us is we should condition it on payment, if, depending on the answer from the department, unless you have that now. I don't think we do. So, based, um, I, I think we can either continue this to the next meeting, or you can also make a recommendation that says if it's an ownership issue of the entire street, rather than the right of way, that that would also come with payment.
Good idea that you're putting forward, city attorney. Um, what's your timeline? You know, don't wanna put a roadblock up that you guys wanna move ahead. Like, we delayed the meeting and like that.
This went, is this went three or four weeks? Is that gonna kill you guys timeline-wise?
Yeah, because redesign, huh?
But I mean, it's not gonna affect the business or the buildings you're building right now. It's not gonna affect any of that. I mean, that, this isn't gonna change any of that one way or the other. And for what it's worth, I wanna remind this body that, uh, a year and a half, two years ago, we abandoned fourteenth, thirteenth and fourteenth street, portions of it, not quite as much as O, for the purpose of, uh, uh, a property over there for drive, basically using that as entrance ways into a, uh, apartment complex that's on the future supposed to be built, with no compensation or anything else. We simply abandoned it without any of this discussion. Now, granted, it wasn't quite as much street, and the street doesn't go anywhere. It ends at a canal, so it doesn't, like, it had the capability of going anywhere. But just reminding this body that this is something we have done in the past, without this conversation.
I think in that instance, and I think, I think there's a, a, a little stub, if you will, I, I don't recall, it wasn't, it's one of the streets that doesn't go through across Highway eighty-six. And so, it's like a quarter of a block, like, between Imperial Avenue and Highway eighty-six. It, it's, it's one of the, third street, maybe, or not?
Yes, third street.
Uh, where the, the, the city operated on the belief, as I recall, that it was right of way, and they could abandon it, so that's what they did. And, uh, so, you're right, we have, we have operated on the assumption that it's a right of way in the past, but that doesn't make the basis to continue with. If we, if it's, if it's wrong, then we need it.
And those streets are what it were. I don't, I don't know about that third, but I know the other streets, the didn't have, uh, sewer or potential water line right of ways in it, that this actually, I think, may have, that we have to continue to have access to.
Thirteenth street as well, and that was, is almost the exact same situ- uh, scenario, where the street was unimproved, unused by the city. So, at that point, it makes sense for the city to give up its interest in that property. Re-abandon it? Yeah.
I don't think that's the issue for me. I think the issue is whether or not the city has a fee interest in it. And if it does, um, there needs to be compensation, all right? It can't just give it away for zero. What the dollar amount will be, that has to be negotiated to see for value, okay? That's a give and take. I'm thinking, uh, to lean towards what the city attorney recommended, so you guys can c- continue moving along that, to approve this, but, uh, contingent upon a dollar amount if the city owns that part of the property, okay? So, then it doesn't slow you guys down. You guys can keep on moving, but having the condition that, um, there'd be compensation if the city owns the property, 'cause it's not right to give it away. And if we did it in the past, well, doesn't mean we have to do it again if it was not, wasn't correct at that point. Okay, that's my position.
And two wrongs don't make a right?
That's right. We don't have, two negatives don't make a positive, right? Would that work for you guys?
All right, so I would, I would like to recommend to the, recommend, looking at my calendar here, that can we, um, continue this item? Well, 'cause we can't table it, and we can't.
I'm not saying that. Well, we just have the motion with respect to that it's contingent upon, if, if the city owns it, that there's a compensation for it.
Well, do it, and the city does the research to see if there is or not, then we can.
So, it gives us it for?
Yes. Oh, I'm looking at the ninth of November.
Okay, and then it has to the city, right, council?
After them, yeah.
Yeah.
And they're gonna do what they want, regardless of what we do anyway.
Yeah, that's true, but, um.
That's, that's okay. You can argue with me all you want. I'm still the chairman.
Yeah, big whoopee, you know? We all vote you. You're only one vote.
That wasn't what I meant. It's easy, easy.
Okay.
No, it was just a recommendation on my part, that maybe if we continue it, let them a chance to, uh, city attorney, let's have an input from the city attorney on that ideology.
So, we're looking at a four, a four-week delay overall, and then we got Thanksgiving in between then, so it's gonna push it in December.
Actually, it's only two weeks.
Isn't the council meeting next week?
Council meeting will be on the second.
Okay.
And ours will be on the ninth, and that would be. And ours would be on the night, and that would be. On the sixteenth. So, city attorney?
I think you have either option, as I stated before, you could either continue it, or you can just recommend it, that you do support this. With um a motion that says if essentially it's a fee interest, it comes with compensation. Which we wouldn't have that amount um by probably by the next meeting anyway. Um but if it's simply a right of way, then it can happen without compensation.
So we do it as a motion, if we do it as a motion and there's a fee interest. They determine there's a fee interest and the city council wants to say there's, we're gonna waive that, then that's city council's business and we're done with it.
Yeah, yeah, I I I think that's essentially, we have a question.
Then I think that may think maybe that's a better route to take, okay, alright, so. Yes, sir.
You guys, I saw you guys going back and forth, is there any, you guys wanna feedback, there's a lot of feedback feedback going over that way.
My experience, I've never seen a city or county ask for compensation for the street. So if you guys owned a lot or a block and were, you know, trying to just get rid of it, then yeah, I can understand compensation being requested. But since it's a street, it's not a legal parcel, you can't build on it, you can't do anything, it's never been improved, so you're basically just releasing releasing your liability in the street.
I think what the recommendation, I I would be prepared to make is, we are only making the recommendation to council. We're not, we're not approving you here tonight, we're we're generating a recommendation to council. I'd be prepared to provide a recommendation to council that this go through. But let leave it up to council at the time that uh your approval goes to them. If by then staff will have time had had time to find out who the owner is and go illegal can go through this whole, what the compensation would be. And let that council be the one making that action, so by us approving it tonight, it's just getting you past the planning commission. But leaving that interest, I mean the fee or how much it would cost up to the council portion of it.
Hey, if there is one, cuz it goes back to the idea of giving away public funds.
I'd like to comment, you say based on your experience, how old are you?
I'm thirty years old.
Okay, so how many years have you been doing your job?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, I think you're still young to say in my years, okay? Fifteen does not make a precedent, alright, I'm not being critical. You're being very brave and stating your position, and that you can use when you negotiate the price if the city owns it.
Out of curiosity.
Yes.
What was the scenario for Worthington Square when they gave up the whole block for a parking lot?
Hey, you wanna know something? Things happen in the past, we're here today.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not trying to.
No, no, but and I'm not gonna argue, it might be a dollar, okay? You know, it might be a dollar, you make your argument, bring those points, okay? It might be a dollar and it'll cover the issue of giving away public funds, okay? Those things happen, I don't think they're gonna go and make a gold mine out of that part.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not seeing, you know, trying to start, I'm just trying to educate myself like how those scenarios happen.
Make the argument, get all your information and get your bullets together so you can counter to come down with a number if the city owns it.
Oh, so I I understand, I understand, I know what you're thinking, um I understand you guys are on a timeline. Um the thing is, in this instance, you have you have folks that are not ignorant to all the details. They know, they know their stuff, okay? And as to what happened in the past, uh I don't think any of these folks were here eh at that, we'd have to do research on that. Uh not only do they know their stuff, um they also have an obligation to. Uh fulfill what they know, they're not just gonna, we're not just gonna stick our head in the sand and and we'll go with the status quo what's been. Done in the past, you know, it's one of those the buck stops here, we we know what the obligation is, we know what our responsibility is. Is uh before we go ahead and just move forward on something, it's like, hey, let's make sure that uh we've seen all aspects of this. Or we we're not gonna be here very long, okay?
Cuz remember, the sub public of sale, the public sale of public property does not always constitute profit. Sometimes it just constitutes some money being exchanged, like made a comment, maybe a dollar. All we wanna know, all we wanna make sure is that everything's done the way it needs to be done and we don't do something by mistake. It's that's all we're trying to do, that's that's all we're trying to get at. So if anybody else has anything else to add, I wanna close public hearing at this time. Public hearing's closed. After that rousing, I'm a discussion, I'm gonna guess that there isn't anything else that we need to discuss as commissioners? It says that we seem pretty, I think we got pretty much everything taken care of. Um so with that. Um I'm going to need a motion to uh.
I was getting ready to point.
I was gonna say, we need to make sure we, cuz I mean, we want to basically approve it, the way it's written with the addition of. With the addition of the uh, that's the part we need to word properly.
Okay, let me see if I can attempt this. Okay, and then I'm I'll look at uh the city attorney to see if I'm doing this correctly. I will make a motion to approve conditional use permit twenty two zero five, no. Backup one, I'll make a motion to appro- to approve the resolution twenty twos. Dash zero eight, sorry, twenty twenty two dash zero eight. Resolution of the Planning Commission finding conformance with the general plan for the right of way abandonment vacation of a portion of O Street. Between twelfth and thirteenth street, contingent upon further research by staff and determination of the ownership. And a uh discussion between council and the the applicant on the potential purchase of the property, if necessary.
I like that, is there a second? Second, it's been moved and seconded, call for the vote.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you all. Motion approved, hopefully this won't get ironed out in a week or so and you guys will be on your way. Thank you, sorry about that, well, not sorry, just that's just life. We're all learning something every day, every time I come in here, I learn something. Couple more years of this, I might actually know what I'm doing. Uh D two, subject hearing, discussion action, additional use permit twenty two dash zero five for Velrom collision. To allow for the operation of an auto repair shop and paint booth facility located at four oh eight East Second Street. Uh APN uh zero six four dash one eight zero dash uh zero zero three. Open public hearing at this time, staff report.
Um item D two is a request for conditional use permit for Velrom collision. Velrom collision wishes to open a new auto body repair shop with a paint booth in the building located at four oh eight. East Second Street, they are sharing the building currently occupied by Dunes to Desert. Which was a CUP approved uh recently in November twenty twenty one. Um Mister Velasco and his partner are here to answer any questions.
Alright, so please come forward, sir. So please let us introduce yourself and let us know what you're about.
My name is Jose Velasco, I'm here as a applicant.
And my name is Fernando Romero.
Commissioners, questions?
Real quick, how long you guys been?
Well, this is uh up, so but I've been doing this kind of work since uh fifteen years, I'd say.
For somebody else or your own shop before that somewhere, somebody else, who'd you work for before that?
Uh Caliber, All Star Collision.
Okay.
Was working at M and M, Caliber Collision, Tucker's Auto Body. And then we tried to, we tried to get our our own shop.
Oh, how how high are we gonna be stacking cars out there? How high are we gonna be stacking cars, in other words, uh first question is, uh are we going to? Uh be organized out there, or we're gonna just start stacking cars out there and it starts looking like a junkyard?
That's right, too. Also because sharing, is we're gonna be sharing the facility with the RV parking lot, so. Everything has to be, you know, organized.
It's it's not picking, it's just one of those, it's gotta be the obvious, okay, um we we got folks here that are interested in. Uh improving Imperial, making it continuously, you know, make it look good. And uh in the past, that's been one of the questions we's at, we've asked about um establishments like this. You know, making sure that you guys have good upkeep. And you know, in in twelve months, we don't wanna see cars stacking up four or five high and whatnot, now I I know it's it's. It's automotive repair and paint booth, but you know, it it's happened in other places before, so it's just the obvious. Uh there's a, there's a home on the southwest corner.
I believe so.
We, is there somebody still living there?
I'm not sure if they're still living there, but I believe there's a house, yeah.
Oh, right there. I I thought that was on the lot, I thought that was part of their office space complex, this one right here?
Okay, yeah, please. Um, so we don't know if somebody's a actively living there?
How did I know?
Does the city know?
There's a building on your lot or next to your lot that you don't know if somebody's in there or not?
Cars, but um I don't know if somebody lives there, yeah, that's the owners.
Is it, is it fenced? Because there's cars next to it on the inside, but there's a fence between the house and your lot?
I believe the house has a fence around, around this.
There's a fence there, but there's no fence here, see what I'm saying?
Mister Chair, yes, sir, if I may, do we have a list of folks who received? Uh notice, cuz aren't we supposed to give notice to everybody within three hundred feet on a conditional use permit? Do we have a list of those people who receive?
I don't have it with me. Notice notices too?
We received nothing.
Are you guys renting this place to pay rent? Uncle on it, as far as the.
Yes, sir.
Concern would be liability, okay, exposure, and if that's a residential occupied building. You would wanna make sure that the owner that's renting out the RV and now the uh repair and paint. Uh business ha- has a separation, you know, for security, so you don't have people wandering onto your property that you're renting.
Well, I mean, it's. This is the one they sent us, yeah, I mean, looking at it, looks like you might have a a fence gap issue right there.
Unless, did you mention something that that's the owner's property, that that residence right there, but you don't know if he lives there?
Oh, he doesn't live there.
He doesn't rent that to somebody else? Okay, what, no, sorry, go ahead.
How well do you know the uh the owner?
Well, I guess just for your own security, I mean, you have a pretty good perimeter fence, and then when you get over to where that house is at. You've got two holes, where like people could just drive by the house and drive right onto your property, if you're renting it. I mean, does somebody talk to the owner about closing those up so that you don't have to worry about? Somebody driving onto your lot and getting into trouble, causing you a problem liability wise?
Always close the gate when when we leave the shop, you know, at the night, they always close.
Oh, I don't see a gate, I don't even see a fence.
Operator is.
Okay, I mean, I'm looking at the house and but maybe there's something that's not in the picture, I'm not seeing. But.
From a liability standpoint, why can't you guys get informed, okay, that if it's a residential, it's. The owner of the property is be is renting it out, you guys need to have. Or not, somebody walks over and.
We're not trying to be hard on you, we're actually trying to protect you, and point out stuff that you might wanna. Consider with these guys and get these things ironed out so that there's your property is secure. Um and the RV people as well, I mean, obviously, you don't want people wa- being able to just wander in. Middle of the night, just because there's no fence. Oh, yeah, by all means, um so how soon you guys been been able to, well, excuse me, sorry. Anybody, other commissioners first?
I I actually just have a question, and looking at the picture that was supplied with this, it looks like you have some pretty substantial standing water. Do you know if there's any plans to do improvements on the parking lot?
I think they're working with the, I mean, creating the area. Also.
And staff, I had a question, on page ten of the conditions of approval. There seems to be a uh review note on there from Alphone about wanting some clarification on item B two, it looks like. Is that note need that little, I don't know if you'll see it on yours, but if you look on the computer, there's like a little uh sticky note. Um and it, there is a a message from Alphone that it needs clarification or needs uh to be more specific. Was that change made in that note just not removed, or is there still changes?
It was not removed, it's it was for another condition, that was unclear, so we removed it.
That's all the questions. Oh, wait, I take that, is the the part that you're doing the painting in, this confer- other uh. Whenever we see the picture, we see see those little boxes that kinda stick out from the warehouse, is that the actual painting booth where you're gonna be doing the painting? Or is the booth within the building?
It booty's up.
And it's enclosed where we're not gonna have problems with wandering paint or?
Yes. That pa- is that paint booth's already um hooked up?
Getting, we're getting on you. Deal it and finish.
You guys have power throughout all of that? Whereas uh you guys have all your contingency for your hazardous materials and?
Yeah, but we were gonna work on that.
So you you guys have been active uh on the property thus far, right, working, setting things up?
Uh for about two months already.
Has already had the the visit by the county fire?
Questions? Say it when, yes. I'm gonna ask real while he stews and makes decision whether he wants to ask another question or not. Um I did read that you had your initial hours were set for um uh eight to five. Monday through Friday, but you were wanted some flexibility on that? What were you thinking in the way of flexibility, one, cuz that's cuz right now, there are no hours of operation in the CUP? So if we don't put them in the CUP, then they could pretty much do whatever they want with that, but not be correct? Yeah, okay, so you needed more flexible hours, what were you thinking, when, cuz it it's written up here, you know, eight to five, but. Um might be requesting more flexibility, what's your thought on flexibility?
And are we working full?
Okay, and you're not looking at uh running um tow trucks or anything out of there at this point in time or anything else? If you wanna do that, you have to come back to us later for discuss that, but you wanna maybe extend it to um. Uh eight to five, Monday through Saturday, would be something more that you would be be more flexible with what you want?
I still do.
Okay.
What you wanna do is ask for the what if, to get that permission, doesn't mean you have to work like that. But at least it's already in the CUP, the conditional use permit, so you don't need to come back and ask again, right?
Better to have too much and not need it than not enough and then have to come back to us and go through this again. I have a couple. Anything else? Well, that's all right, um. We can still, we'll close public hearing and we still have more time to discuss if we choose to have it. Anything else, staff? All right, I'm gonna close public hearing on this item at this time. And at that, any further discussion from the planning commission? So then we're gonna need a motion to approve the CUP with, uh, my recommendation would be to add. Uh, operating hours Monday to Saturday, eight to five as a uh, on the tail end of the the CUP. Cause I think if I read the CUP, it doesn't have the hours in it. So we can make it item. Fourteen. But that's my recommendation, cause I can't make the motion, so. Is there a motion?
That um, we recommend the action to approve resolution number PC two zero. Two two dash oh nine, a resolution planning commission approving. For Val Rom collision with a paint booth facility located at four zero eight East Second Street. APN zero six four dash one eight zero dash zero zero three. With uh, additional provision uh, whereby the operating business operating hours will be Monday through Saturday. Eight AM to five PM.
Is there a second? Move in a second, call for the vote?
Motion passes four zero.
There you go. Good luck, gentlemen. All right, everybody good, nobody needs a break? All right. D three, public hearing discussion action, conditional use permit, CUP twenty two dash zero six. Donahue Painting to allow for the operation of a powder coating oven facility located at six zero eight E Street. East Second Street, APN. Zero six four dash one seven four dash zero zero five, East Street's busy today for business. Or Second Street, excuse me, East, East is busy, East Second's busy. Um, all right, I'm hoping public hearing at at this time, staff report.
Just moving down the street, so item D three is a request for a conditional use permit. Uh, for Donahue Painting, Mr. Donahue has its an established painting business and it recently added. A powder coating facility at his establishment. Um, which requires a conditional use permit. And Mr. Donahue is present as well, if you have any questions?
Who would, Mr. Donahue, please join us. I try to bring up your. Well, that's not what I want, I don't wanna take a picture. How are you doing, sir? Um, I was reading your. Your bio and it sounds like you guys have been there for like forever.
Yes, it's been a while.
Uh, that one particular location in particular, I think.
Uh, this one we've been since nineteen, I believe.
Twenty nineteen?
Yes.
But you've been in business for like a hundred years or something?
Pretty close to that.
Any questions, commissioners?
I guess more informational for me, so these are the silver buildings on the outside, is that the oven? With it being metal on the outside like this, what kind of temperature do you experience on the outside?
For the outside, you can come up and touch it, the inside of the oven goes to about four hundred degrees. Uh, they're four inch thick, I believe they're four inch thick and they have steel, it's kind of a steel wool insulation between the two. So yeah, our biggest thing is contain the heat, cause everything has to go up to four hundred degrees inside that oven for ten minutes. So you can walk up to the outside of the oven and touch it, it's uh, when it's at four hundred degrees on the inside.
And you're currently not operating?
No, we don't even have a gas meter over there, so.
But you're optimistic.
Pardon me?
You're optimistic.
I'm hoping.
Cause it's already buildings, the port, the oven's already there.
Well, our our, unfortunately, our contractor that started doing all this, he passed away in February. And this is how long this has been going on for, so now I'm here by myself, so.
No, any other commissioner, sorry.
Then whenever you're heating these buildings up, does it create any kind of noise?
Exhaust, um, are we? What are we doing with the exhaust?
Uh, there's no exhaust on the, pretty much no exhaust, you get a little bit coming out the front, it just keeps reheating the same air.
Okay, all right, just making sure on that, um, your neighbors, who are your neighbors? That's gonna be my first question, you have a house on the left and a house on the right.
Neighbors to the west, there's an older couple there, they run a daycare. Neighbors to our east, there's a younger family right there. In our building, there used to be a paint and body shop in that building before we bought it.
Saying you're less odoriferous than the previous sentence?
I mean, we are a uh, a lot more friendly than the old owners of that building, so.
You have any problems with the neighbors as far as any?
No, absolutely not, they're they're really, they're really good people, we've already got a hold of a precision fire out of Yuma, they're engineering all the. Uh, fire suppression systems for the oven, we've dealt with uh, the Imperial County Fire on it and it's coming along fine, so.
Uh, that was my main concern was the that neighbors to the left and to the right.
Didn't notice there was a.
Kind is Dune Co. But I I would think that the, you know, the ones directly to the east and west side would be the ones.
That's gas?
Yes.
Um, your hours of operation aren't currently listed on here, what are what are your normal hours of operation?
Vary through the summertime and uh, how jobs go, we usually sometimes we run from five AM to five PM. You know, it's a lot of, lot of twelve hour days plus.
And that's not a problem with your neighbors or anything at the moment?
We've been working there for a while, just, you know, on other things, as our offices and stuff, so the neighbors are really accommodating there.
Right, and you do industrial painting, I'm guessing from what I read?
Yep.
So large items that need to be painted, get done in the shop or or in that other?
Yeah, usually, usually with the industrial stuff, we we run the uh, mobile dustless sand blastings, we deal with the air resource board and everything else yearly with that stuff. Um, but everything's usually on site where it's, you know, where you go out to do it, the powder coating is just a different, just a different part of it. Where you where it's gotta be taken in.
This building is just the oven, you don't do any of the actual powder coating.
We we will do inside, so with that, all there is, there's no spray boots or anything, it's called a spray wall. And cause you you don't have the VOCs that you have with the liquid, all, it's just a powder is all it is. So you spray it on, you have a spray wall that goes up between it. And it's it's mobile, so you can move it around to wherever you're spraying at, and it's just kind of like a vacuum with uh, with air filters. And so whenever you're spraying this powder, it has a slow movement towards the filter wall and that's it.
And so that portion of the work is done inside the main building or inside?
Inside the building, yep.
Is he just spraying bake?
Yep, that's pretty much it.
And that the. If I understand the process right, whatever item. It is your powder coating is actually has electrical charge applied to it, so the powder actually sticks to it. So it's, when it's, once it grabs it, then it sticks to it.
Be surprised, it sticks to everything, whenever, like if you're spraying it, you don't have a good ground, your whole head would be the.
So. I'm just curious, since no one's asking any questions, so once you, so like say this was metal, I want you to powder coat it. And your powder gets on it. If you touch it, does the powder come off on your fingers, or how does, how do you transport that item to the?
Hang it, everything gets hung, there's uh. We end up putting a piece of wire through it, or you have a little hook that goes through it and it hangs, and once it comes out of the oven, this is the difference between painting and. The paint guys will tell you, like whenever he he has to do something, let's say his takes. Say eight or ten days for it to cure before you could put it into service, the powder, once it comes out of the oven. It's uh, it's ready, as soon as it cools down to temperature, it's ready to go into service.
But once something's coated, but before it goes in the oven, it doesn't just come off with your finger?
No, it's it doesn't, it's, I I thought the same thing, like you push the rack and everything hangs on racks, you push the rack and it would fall off on the way to the rack, it doesn't. It's, it keeps it, it keeps a charge for a while.
And you'll do small stuff as well as big stuff, or you guys, I might have some rims for you to do.
There you go.
Sorry. Back to the subject, commissioners, any other comments or discussion items on this?
The uh, baking it, does it go back into the main building or does it stay inside the uh, the oven?
But it'll, it'll comes out just to cool down, depends on what size the, how thick the steel is, you know, before it cools, some of the stuff will come out if it's. You know, if it's tin or something, it'd be cooled down in a minute or two. But uh, the other stuff will come out, it'll cure. Right there, but we do have, I don't know if you guys have the pictures, we've got a big privacy link fence that goes in front between everything, there's, you know, everything be contained in there, closed down.
I mean, if you. You could bake something in the morning by a couple hours from that time, the person can come and pick it up and drop off their money and they're. It's out of your hair and they're they're on their way. Any other questions? All right, I'm gonna close public hearing at this time on uh. This item. Any further discussion?
Direct relation to this, I have a question, I guess maybe staff would know, are, do the, those houses in that area, it's industrial. Are the, were the houses allowed to build in in industrial area, or were the houses there and then the zoning got changed to industrial?
It goes back, what, fifty, sixty years? I, I I know, I I I look around at some of that and thinking like, we need to just get these houses bought up and get them out of there and just. Make it all industrial, but. You know, a lot of that stuff was there before we were born. Okay, well, if we don't have any adjustments, then I need a motion to approve the um, uh, CUP as written.
Make the motion. To approve. Six for Donahue Paint, for the operation of a powder coating oven facility. Located at six oh eight East Second Street, APN zero six four, one seven four, zero zero five.
For second. All right, be moved in second, I call for the vote?
Motion passes four zero.
Good luck, sir. I might be looking you up in a few months. I had a prediction we'd be done by seven thirty, I guess I might. It's a good thing I didn't make bets. Um, don't we have some changes that have to be made to one of these, so I can't sign it yet? Okay, uh. Commissioner reports. Mr. Body, do you have anything to report?
When are we gonna start on uh, Eaton Road? You know, the um, Eaton Road, the landscaping, the weather's changed. When are they gonna start up on the rest of it?
I believe uh, Mr. Hope has made a report to the council and and did give the schedule. And as I'm sitting here, I don't remember exactly when it is, but it's, but I, but I think the plan to s- start. Those areas that haven't yet been completed is very soon.
The next question in the wood. On the fifteenth October, on, are we now at the end of December?
I I believe at this point, they're still talking late November. Be uh, take even taking the, uh, there's been two separate events that caused delays. And I think fingers are crossed a little bit, but I think their 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 current date is November twenty seven.
After thanks.
I'm sorry?
After Thanksgiving.
Yes, after.
That's it.
You have any problems with the storm drains, uh, anybody know any problems with the storm drains, everything worked the way it was supposed to?
Ah, yes, yes, actually, uh, the uh, catch basins work pretty good. We actually solved the problem, then the main problem we had before was Second Street. And after the improvements that were done recently, every, every problem was um, uh, gone. The others uh, street that had kind of similar problems was uh, eleven street. Uh, but the improvements uh, that were done not long ago addressed those problems, so. Basically, we're pretty much in good shape, um, obviously, there are some areas that need to be improved. Uh, but overall, uh, we didn't have really uh, any, any uh, big problem.
Did see considerable um. Cooling. To be, to be nice with it, uh, but I'm gonna say that that was because of the. Uh, the sheer volume of water that was coming from the sky, right?
Oh, no, yeah, yeah, they it this uh, last rain was an event that is really not typical.
Yeah, I I just, I wanna put that out there, cause we also have to understand that, you know, it's, it was just a lot of water.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and and actually, when the sign is done, uh, there are like different. Uh, faces that you take into consideration, one of them is is a ten year rain. A twenty five year rain or a hundred year rain, so the hundred year rain, which is pre- pretty much what happened the last time. Which is a lot of water in a really small period of time. It's uh, I mean, it's not easy to handle, but as long as we are able to handle it in in a, I mean, reasonable. Uh, period of time, we are pretty much good.
Thank you to the city maintenance, I saw them scurrying around town, uh, making sure that the drains were doing what they were supposed to. Um, taking care of the infrastructure, so, um, I don't know if. The city council has said thank you, but I I wanna say thank you on on that, and I saw them running around trying to keep up. Um, so thank you, uh, how often? Just from my knowledge, how often do we go around those parks, the uh, the restrooms in the parks and uh, do the upkeep on it?
Um, no, that's not.
Is is that on a, on a monthly, weekly, biweekly?
Oh, I think it, they have a v- very regular and often schedule. Um, it's, it's hard to keep up even as often as they're there, uh, and obviously, they respond if there are. Incidents in between time, but they're there, so I I would say multiple times in a week. And even that at times.
Okay, no, that that's fine, that's fine, I'm I'm starting to catch up to all of these, all these things that they need. That I, you know, I I feel that we need to keep an eye on, so I'm, that's why I'm asking all the questions. Um, also, we we have a, I have a list of of city or street, city streets that need um. Some review, some reconsideration, um, throughout the city. Um, I'll hand that to where I need to, but I just want to to let us know. Resurfacing, repairs, anything?
I hope my streets on that list.
Uh, a- anything?
Well, yeah, the the council approves uh, a list, as as we determine. The monies that are available, they create a list and establish priorities. That's something that community development does, of course, there's never enough money to address. Uh, all of the streets that need attention, um, and so w- we we hear about. Um, those streets, a- and yeah, you drive around, it's it's pretty obvious. Um, I I mean, li- like near Ben Ben Hulse, I don't know if everybody speaks about. Seventh, I believe it's seventh. Yeah, it is, uh, makes county roads look good.
Yeah, um, I'll get with with them on that and compare my list to their list and 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 start following up on it. Uh, especially after all all these rains, uh, if they were already questionable before, um, then they're. I don't think they're questionable anymore, I think they they do need at least some consideration.
And the and the council, uh, ha- ha- has uh, asked that we look at options, I guess, there are many folks who remember. There was a day when uh, they would oil the streets. Uh, they would crack seal and then sometime later come back with it. And and that isn't, obviously, isn't as good as a, what, a lot of these streets, the issue is that they need complete reconstruction. We find like for with La Bushri, for example, they threw down some asphalt, but there was like ve- very poorly done base material. Uh, and so, uh, uh, what we, what we often find is that in terms of what it takes. To get a street where it ought to be is is it. Oiling and crack sealing just doesn't.
That's fine if you're taking care of a street that's not that old, but once a street gets to a certain point in age, that's worthless.
The the crack seal and slurry is intended as a maintenance to keep from having the issues, it's not a repairing of the street, it's just maintaining it.
Once it reaches a certain point, it's that's beyond like this. Streets over in this part of the city on the far side. streets over in this part of the city on the far side, I mean, those are beyond reproach, I mean, those are terrible. No, I was, I was actually thinking that, all area, and I mean, there's not even any gutters in some of those places, they deteriorated, I mean, that's a whole nother. That's a super fun discussion almost, it's so much money that's needed to fix that.
Well, I, one of the things that the, that brings some light at the end of the tunnel is, is indeed the measure that's on the ballot, if indeed the transient occupancy tax is increased, that is, that is money that goes to the general fund, which is the source of, of, source of money aside from Measure D and those things. Um, that, that, that is money that the council can, can, would have some discretion about where it goes.
Now, whenever we collect um, impact fees, I know that those fees have to be, have to go towards something associated with the project that we collect the fees on, you know, increasing streets to get to it or whatever. Now, these um, tr- transit occu- occupancy taxes, is that something that can be used anywhere, or is it something where we would have to demonstrate? That is being used by the occup- the people going to that hotel, like it's, it's servicing that hotel?
The transient occupancy tax is a general fund, it's a general fund uh, revenue source. And so, the ci- the city would have discretion about how, how, how it's used and where it's used, and.
Uh, no, um, I, I was considerate as to the seal, the and um, general maintenance on, the, these roads are, yeah, it's gonna be resurfaced, I, I'm, I'm trying to tap dance without throwing casting stones here, um, they, they, they really are gonna be a, a project, but like I said, it's, I'll do the legwork on that and see where the, where the uh, city council's at, and obviously with the further on up the line. Uh, and just, just start um, shaking the tree and see what, what we come up with.
If you, if you, if you create a list, then I, then I would suggest some dialogue with community development. Uh, uh, they're the ones that interact with the uh, ICTC and Caltrans and those entities with for, which is where the money, a large part of the money comes from. Uh, but like I say, the council approves a, a priority list, uh, and so, um, uh, getting your voice heard would be, would, might be helpful. I, I, I think, I, I would like to think that community development has a pretty good han- handle. Uh, and so, uh, I would think that the streets that you are identifying wouldn't be a s- big surprise. But, um, um, I, I, I would suggest that it never hurts to provide that information as you develop it.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna show that we, we're not ignoring it, we're, we're, we're looking at it, we're, we're, somebody's gonna start asking questions and figure this out, I, I'm learning.
You know, we are also the traffic commissioner, last time I checked, traffic's on streets.
Is um, there is uh, considerable erosion on Imperial and Twelfth. It's gonna start eating, it, I mean, it, Imperial is, is state, right? Uh, but on along Twelfth, when you go east, it it's starting to eat into the road. Eventually, that's gonna collapse, especially when people start to hug.
At the storm washed it out, right, when you come, I know exactly, that's where exactly I come out, whenever you come off of Twelfth and you're getting, uh, heading east getting ready to make that right turn to go south on I eight, it was kind of, it had eroded underneath and they had gone in and done some, a good job of filling it in and putting some gravel, well, this last storm has washed it all out, so if you go over there, what if you, when you're making that right turn, if you get too close to the edge of the roadway, there is a, a large area where that, that dirt eroded out.
Eastbound Twelfth at eighty six. If you're making a right turn, that's
Yeah, and, and like I said, they had done, done a good, good job before, where they went in and packed it all in there, and it was good like that, for, what, a year or two? But this last storm washed it all out.
It's, it's eaten the, the, the soil underneath, and it, it's continuously, it's eating away and there's nothing but just the asphalt. The road surface that, that's on there, at some point, a heavy vehicle is just gonna go right through it.
Yeah, you know, I, 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 I'm taking a note and I, I guess, uh, we ju- we just have to coordinate with the public services department. Actually, uh, our department, community development, uh, we are trying to actually restore uh, the roadways, like right now, we have secured money for uh, Eaton Road from Belore up to uh, eighty six, and from eighty six i- in a different project up to the railroad tracks. So basically, the um, uh, that's the main focus right now, and eventually, once we get some additional funding, is try to do a similar project that, as we did about uh, six years ago, and work in this uh, part of the city, uh, with an overlay project, which actually, uh, we remove probably about inch and a half, two inches of the existing roadway. We add a leveling course, then A-RAM, which is a really nice material, which is actually uh, working with the weather. Yeah, and then a final um, layer on top. We did in several areas here, and we are approaching again to do like a second phase of that, and we have identified, and probably, if, if we share, if you shared your list, we have identified several areas that are in, uh, I would say probably in worse condition than others. But once we repair one, we see that the next one, which look good now, it looking really terrible, but yeah, yeah, we would appreciate if you can send your list and probably compare with what we have for the future overlay project.
Yeah, for sure, uh, I, I just, I see we, we're, we're trying to get the, the uh, businesses and, and get the flow of traffic through the city, uh, but I also wanna remember that we also, I would also like to look out for the residents. And that's, you know, the, the folks in the neighborhoods and whatnot.
Hmm, yeah, the, the, the folks right now along Eaton, because that the, the funding we are getting from uh, ICTC, it, this is federal funding, Caltrans, uh, uh, then ICTC, then the cities, uh, they do, like, the priority are the main arteries, main collectors. That's why the, this money is focused on those areas. Yeah, but yeah, and, and the other program, the overlay program, uh, we use different funding, but that, that's once it's available. Yeah, we, we have, we have that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, promise one more, it's, it's too late, you've already gone over budget, but go ahead.
Victoria Terasus. Are, are we still moving on that?
Sorry, what, what?
The Victoria Terasus, uh, subdivision, yeah.
Where are we at on that?
Yes.
The narrow street that they're
Do you have a question?
Yeah, my question is, are we still moving along with that, with, what is the?
Well, yeah, I, a letter has gone out, um, as, as you know, there were a lot of different options looked at. The, the folks that live there, their preferred o- op- option was basically that the city not enforce its ordinance. That's not, that's not a viable option. Um, the uh, and we, and for ADA and safety reasons, we don't believe that abandonment of the sidewalk and creation of a walkway on the street, uh, is a, is a good idea. Uh, so basically, they've been advised that from the city's standpoint, it's a status quo. Which means that at some point in time, and particularly if, if there's a complaint, that there's gonna be enforcement.
Uh, and the other reason I bring it up is, I'm sure if, of the three people that are watching this, three of them are in that subdivision, checking to see if we're even discussing it, so I, I, that's why I asked.
If they haven't already, they, they'll receive a letter from the city.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sure? Commissioner Mendola?
I just have one, uh, as we know, coming up this Friday is the uh, market days. I would encourage the, the city staff to do some more marketing on that, only because I know whenever it we had our uh, storm event and the market days was postponed. It was originally advertised as being postponed to October twenty ninth, which I believe was a Saturday. And there was a lot of feedback given about how that is in conflict with the carnival, the local carnivals. And it appears from what I'm just realized today, had to have been moved to Friday. And that's not, I don't think that's being marketed very well, that it's been moved to Friday, if that is indeed what's happened, because I, I literally didn't know until today. And I, I think the city should be, needs to consider putting out some more information, it, it definitely some blasts on the Facebook page or whatever, to make sure people realize it was moved to Friday and not Saturday. So we wanna make sure that the community's aware of that.
Wonder right now?
Yeah, see, it was, like, everything I knew, it was the twenty ninth, and that's everything I've been planning for was the twenty ninth. But I found out today, it was the twenty eighth. So, we may wanna do some more advertising on that.
I would think in some ways on the twenty ninth would be more advent, I mean, you had kids going to the carnival and they had their costumes on, they could go to this, the the street fair and then they could maybe get candies.
The times are concurrent though, people wanna take their kids to the carnival and then take them trick or treating, which is when Imperial does their trick or treating. And you've got the parents wanting to go.
They're too busy being at the carnival.
No matter how much candy I buy, I still don't get a trick or treat or something.
Might as well throw it in the street.
Yeah, so I just, just a recommendation that we do some more marketing on that, make sure people are aware.
A little more on the website or something, or wherever we can.
And ev- I think even on the main one where they originally changed it to the twenty ninth, someone went and changed it to twenty eighth, but if you go down in the comments, you can see where people are saying, well, the twenty ninth is in a good day. So, we would just need to make sure, we wanna make sure that we get a good attendance and
I'm afraid with the postponement and everything, it's probably gonna be catcher's, catch can at best anyway, so we'll be lucky if we have fifty percent of what we we normally have, but you know, storms are storms and nobody, uh, we don't get to schedule those.
I do applaud the city, whoever came up with the idea of allowing the vendors with the food, giving them an opportunity to sell that. I, 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 that was, I thought that was an awesome opportunity, at least give them an opportunity to get rid of some, rid of, ah, get rid of some of that food that had already been prepared.
Alright, well, based on that, I think I'll just keep my mouth shut. Staff? Any reports? Do you? Alright, you never say anything, awesome.
Um, the city applied and was awarded a grant uh, for ISB thirteen eighty three, uh, recycling organics. And with those funds, uh, we purchased my little compost pails, that I'll be distributing at the event on Friday, um, and I have one for each of one, if you'd like.
For the community, do they have to bring a bill or anything?
Does that come with instructions on how to use it?
Yes.
I, sometimes, I do read instructions on occasion, yes. Not that much, I'm, well, never mind, I am that much of a man, but don't side the point. Anything to report, staff?
Up for me, I am.
Mr. City Manager?
Nothing for me.
What's the scheduled start time for that?
Five, five o'clock to nine o'clock.
Five to nine?
Yeah, so, you have to listen to the bell game on the radio.
Oh, is that the bell game also?
All the, all the should have their big rivalry.
Already? Should like be in later.
There was a reason that it was originally scheduled as it was, just for this very thing, reading these weekends as we get into the fall.
Well, I mean, we can't predict storms, I mean, storms do as storms do, you know, and you know, after the hurricane, we were kinda thought we were clear. But, you know, guess what?
I happened to be driving by when that storm hit with all the stage, uh, and everything having, having been set up, how, was there any kinda damage done to that? Cause I know they were out there in the rain trying to.
I, I understand that the, some of the equipment that was set up got wet, whether or not it was permanently damaged, it, it, I know that they were not happy about the fact that.
Maybe if he hadn't set up so early, he wouldn't have had that problem happen, but if he doesn't turn the power on, he puts it out in the sun for a couple of days, it should work, but don't fit, don't plug it in. Alright, um, with that, I think I will call it a night for this fun-filled evening, and I will close the planning commission at seven fifty three in the evening.